This study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:03 PM, Tuesday, August 16, 2022, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcomed and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535 where the live stream video may be found. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecquell, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Lemmonson.
Here.
Clerk Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Treasurer McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Director Workman.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, agenda is approved. 3.01, Strategic Plan Implementation Follow-Up. Dr. Pecquell.
Dr. Marvin and Board members, I'm hoping that we can get the single slide. There we go. Thank you so much. Fantastic. This is an item that we discussed putting on the Board agenda in our Executive Committee meetings with our Chair and Vice Chair, although it has been discussed as part of the larger strategic plan implementation strategy that the Board has talked about, actually at a previous study session and a regular meeting. We wanted to pull it out for specific discussion, though, tonight to be sure that the full Board had a chance to weigh in on this proposed reorganization of part of our regular Board meetings and our study sessions, really for the next three years, the period of our strategic plan. This is a process discussion, but as we all know, the process with which we implement the strategic plan and with which the Board leads the implementation of the strategic plan is very, very important. We have instituted over the past year a new structure for our Board meetings and regular Board meetings, and a key feature of that is a focus topic in each Board meeting where we have endeavored to take a deeper dive into some aspect of the district's work. Over the past year, those focus topics were determined by Board member interest initiatives that were happening within the school district and deadlines that faced the school district, like submitting our World's Best Workforce proposal. What we're proposing now, more specifically what I'm proposing, but I've worked on with Jean and Kathy in our Executive Committee meetings, is to reorganize those focus topics around the strategic plan in addition to focus a part of every study session also on the strategic plan. As Board members will recall, and as a very detailed document that is in Board docs outlines, which, by the way, has been updated since you saw it last based on feedback from Board members and from leaders across the district, we really have two broad levels besides the Board's policy leadership at which we'll be implementing the strategic plan. There's the school improvement process at the school level or the skip process, and then there are systems change initiatives that operate across the school district. And so here's what we're proposing and what we wanted your feedback on tonight. If this proposal looks good to the Board, or if you want to suggest revisions in the proposal tonight, what I'll work then with the Chair and Vice Chair to do after this meeting is to calendar out this new process in a detailed calendar for at least the next two years that reflects this new approach. So before we went through the work of redesigning the calendars, we wanted to make sure that this proposal would meet the needs of you as Board members. So hopefully clicking here, and if not, somebody can just click me forward. I can just do it up there. Thank you, Amy. This is one of those things that probably didn't need a slide, but it's helpful at least for me. That's the long document that outlines in detail what this process would include, but you can just go ahead then to the next slide. So the proposal is this. In, generally speaking, the Board now has two regular meetings and a study session each month, with the exception of certain months in which we only, for instance, have one study session because of a holiday or another commitment. The focus topic at one of the meetings each month would be an update from one of our schools or a program on their school improvement process. So a deep dive into what is happening at Kellogg Middle School or Bamber Valley Elementary School or Mayo High School or Phoenix Academy. Our second component of the process would be in a study session, we would take a deep dive into one of the system change initiatives in the strategic plan. As Board members will recall, there are two waves of system change initiatives. One wave that kicks off this fall and a second wave that kicks off next fall. And those system change initiatives range from everything like defining and implementing culturally responsive deeper learning, multi-tiered systems of support. Those are two Wave One initiatives. Or Wave Two would be shifting the way we allocate funding and staffing to the site level and launching a parent empowerment program. So the study session would include a deep dive in a setting like this one into one of those system change initiatives. And then in Board Meeting Two, we would also focus on that system change initiative. So every month, we essentially would have a twofer, an opportunity for Board members to probe, ask questions, dialogue with each other in a less formal setting of a study session like tonight, and then revisiting the same issue, the same system change initiative, in that second Board meeting. The logic of that twofer strategy would be giving you as Board members a chance to have that inquiry and that dialogue, and then soon thereafter, having the opportunity in a formal Board meeting to revisit the issue. You might or might not be taking action on that system change initiative in the formal Board meeting. Some weeks, it would be in the action category and you might be voting. In other weeks, it might be in that prep for action category where you are deepening your thinking and sharing your thinking with the community. There would then, final two parts of this proposal. There'd be two gateways every year that we would really take a step back and look at how is the strategic plan going across schools and across system change initiatives. In November, we would look at a comprehensive summary of our data on both implementation. Are we meeting our milestones and our timelines? And on outcomes. Are we seeing the shifts in student outcomes, social emotional outcomes, learning environments, staff work environments? And then in December, June, excuse me, we would take a comprehensive look at how we're investing in the strategic plan, funding, staffing, and also looking at our plans for the following year, including things like the superintendent's goals and work plans. The logic of November is all the data is in by that point, from state test scores to the previous year's post-secondary outcomes to our survey data. It also is when currently the state of Minnesota requires us to submit both the World's Best Workforce and the Achievement and Integration Plans. And so we can unite that state requirement with a deep dive at the School Board level. The logic of the June timeline is that's when you are reviewing and approving the budget, and so that's when we would be taking a look at our resource investments. So that's the proposal, and we wanted to just give Board members a chance to both ask questions, share observations, propose alternatives. And then, as I mentioned, pending the discussion tonight, we'll work as an Executive Committee to either implement this strategy in our, what we now call the ABCD Annual Board Calendar Draft, and share that with you and the community shortly after this so that we have a work plan for the Board that is aligned with the strategic plan.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Yes, Ms. McLaughlin.
Question about the November Board meeting. You expanded on this a little bit, but is the idea that the data would be for the prior academic year?
Yes. It would be mostly prior academic year. Maybe if there are some measures that you were wanting around the beginning of a school year as like early awareness indicators, like where did we come in with actual enrollment in October 1? That we would have by November 2, but it would mostly be prior year data.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow.
I think it's a great idea and fully support it. I'm curious, though, as he had referenced this past year in particular, or since the three-year executive team had agreed that there would be focus topics. Some of them necessarily weren't tied to, quote, "a plan we didn't have." So how will we be able to still have provision for things that fall outside the realm range of either the skip or whatever else? You know, things that we as Board members may think rises to a level of a focus topic discussion.
Dr. Barlow, it's a key question. I think in many cases, that's what the monitoring category will lend itself to, which is kind of an intentionally broad category that would allow us to define most anything that you're interested in as Board members as something that you want to be monitoring. There's also the info and outreach category that can be for more sort of briefer informational updates. We also could have more than one focus topic, especially in a study session, and I'm sure we'll need to as those things come up. So that's a really important point because you're absolutely right. There will be things that will arise that you as Board members will want to have addressed that need to find a place in the agenda as well.
Absolutely. And at schools, students, parents will want to have addressed sort of, you know, in the moment. So we have to be flexible enough to be sure that we can include those.
Thank you.
Ms. Nathan.
So to your point, Director Barlow, and I guess to the rest of my colleagues, I would ask that if there was a focus topic that we have had on the calendar that is very close to your heart, and you want to make sure that there's a spot on that on a regular agenda, that would be a good thing to communicate to the Exec Committee so that we know sort of what you're thinking. And I'm also thinking about the focus topics and the number of schools and the number of meetings. So is it your intent to get through all of the schools to present each year? Or, which probably means we'll have to double up, or is it a three-year cycle?
By my account, Director Nathan, it's a two-year cycle.
Okay.
That we could get through the systems change initiatives and all of our schools in a pretty clean two-year cycle.
So the community should not expect to see all the schools. So the community should not expect to see all the schools presenting in a school year, in a calendar year, it's going to be over two.
Not according to this proposal. We certainly could do like more than one school, but the logic here is to go deep into what's happening with one school as opposed to trying to say, well, thank you, but we have to get this other school up. And so they really would have the spotlight that night, and the same thing for the system change initiative. If we're looking at that portfolio of schools, strategy, or mental health, that's our one topic and we're not in the focus topic area, but that we could get through the full flow in our current two-year structure? We'll have to be efficient, but...
One of the things we struggled with in some of our key decisions over the past few years, like the start times, was not knowing when we needed to have a decision by, because the impact on the system and the impact on the implementation was profound. So while we can't put in the A B C D, we will be taking a vote on this issue on this date. Is there some way that we can know by when a Board decision would be needed on some of these system initiatives, so that we are planning backwards on that?
Absolutely. In some cases, Dr. Nathan, we do need to do that precisely. So one of the strategic change initiatives for this year is what we're calling portfolio of schools, which is vague, but it's start times, transportation options, enrollment areas for certain schools like Longfellow, creating a middle school ALC. That has to have a late-fall deadline, and the Board needs to have multiple meetings to consider it. So that's one where we'll unquestionably have to back map from a Board vote to have that this process land the plane on time. In other places, like maybe mental health, there may not be a specific decision you have to make that we can see right now time certain, but when you approve the budget for next year, you might be making a new investment in staffing in that area, but you would have had the system change discussions prior to when you're voting on the budget, so that when we bring you the budget, you can see, oh, here's the investment that we've been talking about. So in that instance, your decision point is voting on the following year's budget. And so, yeah, the task that would I think be before us and before Cabinet if we adopt this approach is definitely to look at the times when you need to make decisions through a vote and make sure you have appropriate deliberative time for yourselves and appropriate opportunities for community input before we ask you to make that decision.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Workman.
Yeah, it's not a question, it's just kind of a comment on what Director Nathan just said. I think one of the frustrations that the Board has had is that all of a sudden something is on us and you have to make a decision. And especially if there's a time period, you know, like by December 1st, we have to have this done, and it's now November 30th, and, you know, so I really like this idea of backwards planning. I think it's really important so that we're starting with, you know, where we need to be, and how do we get there, and how long is it going to take to get there? So just a way of saying, I guess, I second everything she said.
Yeah, I thank you, Dr. Workman. We presented the Strategic Plan Implementation Document last week to teams, diverse teams from all of our schools, and there was a lot of positive energy, a lot of excitement around clarity of direction, seeing the issues they care about there, and by far the biggest concern was it's so ambitious and it's so complex, and how can we get all of this done? When I asked people like, well, what would you take off? There were not clear things to take off, because we've kind of done what we could take off, but I think it makes the point you just made, it's critical for you at the Board level, it's also critical for our building leaders, it's critical for our department leaders. Everybody needs to be able to see these trains coming and plan for them and feel that they had a chance to give input on them, and that if a decision is made that maybe isn't the one you would have made, you've had a chance to understand it, to get ready for it. And so that needs to start with the school board, but it needs to, I'm sure there'd be a lot of principals in the district who would be nodding exactly with what you just said from their perspective of, yeah, I need to know, I need to know earlier as well.
Anything else?
And just to be fair, this doesn't necessarily include our operational facility requests as they come in.
All that will continue as it has been, and as I think, actually just to give Scott a nod of appreciation, I think that those facilities decisions, not unlike other decisions, just highlighting one area, I think Scott and his colleagues do a great job of planning ahead for those decisions and reviews the Board needs to make. And so they don't, with a couple of antenna here or there, they don't jump onto the agendas at the last minute, because we're, they're very, very planful in that, and I think if we can kind of bring that to the core work on the strategic plan, it should feel a lot like our long-term facilities review does, but we're talking about mental health instead of just facilities.
Patrick Garcia.
I love that you brought that up. I think, though, one of the things that the strategic plan allows us to do and the way that we're structuring of how we're going to monitor this over a period of time is that not only does the strategic plan give us shared language, but it helps us to be able to anchor all of the decisions we're making in kids. Because it is hard sometimes to say like, we're talking about this gigantic building and all the money and, you know, HVAC and la la, and, you know, how can you bring that to there are X number of, you know, fifth graders in this building or sixth graders in this building? But I think that this allows us to kind of weave that golden thread so that we can be overall planful. And I also appreciate the biannual check-ins and the structure, so I agree with my colleagues too. I think this will be helpful in grounding us in some of the work that we do.
Well, I'm not hearing any kind of objection to this. Quite a bit of confirmation, some good questions, and some good support for why this is intelligent, including the golden thread, which I think is golden. So again, this is a study session, we won't be voting, but Dr. Pecal, I'm getting a real consensus from the Board that they absolutely support this plan.
I appreciate that. So we will share the A B C D with you in draft form that reflects this strategy, and you can make suggestions as you have in the past, like, yeah, I'd like to see that earlier, that can go later. So Board members can give us a sense, but we will start the draft with a lot of backward mapping, as we've talked about tonight, so that we find ourselves on a pretty predictable path in this very ambitious agenda.
Thank you. We have two more items on the agenda. One is the Board goal setting, and the second is a closed session for superintendent evaluation. We have Cabinet members here who are absolutely invited to stay, but I'm assuming you all have plenty of work to do. So at this time, if you choose, you can absolutely be excused, and we thank you for your attendance up to this point.
I think they're waiting to be told twice.
And it's a beautiful day.
It's a beautiful day, yeah. We have then 3.02 Board Goal Setting for 2022 and 2023. As we all know, every year, the Board does a self-evaluation that is conducted by the Minnesota School Boards Association in order to take a really hard look at the work we're doing and whether, what we need to do better mainly. We are also encouraged every year to set goals for the following school year and what our priorities will be. We conducted our Board Self-Evaluation last spring, and we had a session with Gail Gilman, the Minnesota School Board Association staffer, to sort of review that evaluation. At that time, she suggested that this Board and every Board set up two or three Board Goals for a school year, and that those would be our priorities in addition to the many, many things that Boards are responsible for, that we really focus on two or three priorities. She also suggested that for each goal, we set a SMART goal. And for those of you who've been around education long enough, and all of you have, SMART stands for S-specific, that means it has to be clearly understandable. From measurable, how are we going to know if we have made progress towards that goal? Is there going to be a number? Is there going to be an action? Is there going to be something else achievable, that is? Is this something that the Board can actually control? I would like to cut down on the number of mosquitoes in Minnesota, but apparently school boards don't have that kind of authority. Realistic, will it benefit the district? And finally, time-bound, by when? Want to achieve this by when? Now, in reaching out to Board members, as Ms. Gilman did since last spring, we have come up with four priorities that Board members have said, these are things that we think are particularly timely right now. You've had a copy of this for some time, you've looked it over, and let me just quickly review. These four include providing information to the public that supports Board discussions and decisions, and communicates the rationale for decisions to the community. This is the idea that not everybody watches Board meetings, and not everybody watches the entire Board meetings. So are we sure that we are communicating clearly not just what the Board has decided, but why? Why it was important and why we came to the decision we did? Secondly, continually monitor progress towards the goals and outcomes of the strategic plan. The Board, this Board was involved in creating that strategic plan along with many, many other staff, people, and community members. So are, how are we going to monitor whether we are using it as the primary basis for making decisions? When are we going to vote? What are we going to vote on? What will be our involvement? The third one was creating methods for engaging and informing the community and staff to explain and educate them on the budget. School district budgets are unbelievably complicated because of the sources of funding, the way funding can be spent, and the very, very specific ways that money must be recorded. You know, we have our budget book that's how many pages long?
Hundred and forty-six.
Hundred and forty-six. And it's tiny print, so it is completely transparent, but not everybody reads all 146 pages or understands it. You know, a lot of folks, and not their fault, don't understand even where the funding comes from. We're one body that can't just decide we are going to vote as a Board to get more money. This is a not-for-profit agency. We can't just raise costs on what it costs to educate kids. So, and one thing there that we had talked about and approved actually was creating a community advisory committee on budget and finance. And the fourth one, fourth goal that was suggested was to ensure the public is well-informed about the Board's roles and responsibilities, possibly having a consistent message to share with the community and clearly outlines both, possibly creating an easy-to-understand guidebook. These are the things that school boards can do, these are the things they are not authorized to do. So for those four, do any of you want to speak to any of them, saying we absolutely need this one? Do you want to offer an additional possibility? Do you want to edit or delete any of those that we have?
I'll go first. I'd like to, first of all, I fully support all four, but one that particularly stands out to me is number four. Ensure the public is well-informed about the Board's roles and responsibilities, have a consistent message to share with the community that clearly outlines both. This spoke to me in that, and even as a candidate, some years back, I, in my own mind, had a thought, a vision, a goal, and I'm going to make a change, and I'm going to this, and I'm going to that, only to realize, well, it wasn't upon being elected, but it was more so upon attending the requisite MSBA training, Minnesota School Board Association training, that I began to realize that, oh, I can't change the world.
Well, Don, you can, but you don't...
Well, yeah, I try to do it along that venue versus the Board, but I found it so valuable to me then and still do to this day, because I think there are many who still have that desire to serve and want to affect change and be a part of those, the movement of change, if you will. And yet, it's important to understand that there are, well, front of the better or rules that we didn't create. I didn't know prior to becoming elected that school Board members are the only elected officials that have to attend required training. Okay? And interesting enough, I didn't even know it was a paid position until when you called me in and said, Don, we need you to fill some paperwork out. But then finally, I didn't know the level of training that would be required. To the credit of members of this current Board, the last couple of years, a school board academy has been provided, and I think that addresses much of that, much of what I didn't know then, but is readily available now. So all of that to just get back to number, it's important for us to have a consistent message, not just our message, it isn't our message, okay? It's the message of school boards and the work of school boards, and I think the more communicative we are regarding that, potentially the less people who may not understand may begin to understand that, oh, you know, I just can't, you know, expect required demand or run seek and change without understanding, no, there are things that have to be adhered to. And so, yeah, I fully support these, and each of them have tremendous value, and I just want to speak to four in particular.
Thank you. Ms. Workman.
Yeah, so I thank you, Don, for that. I think you said it really well. Just one more thing on that, I think a friend of mine said, is school Board members generally run on management? This is what I'm going to do, and this is, but once you're elected, you don't run, you don't do things that are managerial, it's governance. And I think with the way the county and the city operate, you know, like, what's the problem with this alley? You know, they think that this is what we do here too, so I think it's important to make those distinctions. So on point number three, offer a Budget 101 for staff and community. Do we see at some point the, I think I've talked to John earlier in the summer about the Budget Advisory Committee being established and getting the community involved in that way? Now, that's not really a Budget 101, but I think it is a piece of this as to how we inform the community by having them directly involved in the budget process, where, you know, they may have to consider things that they've never thought about before, so I think that's a good thing. I mean, it's not going to educate thousands of people until maybe they go out and spread the word, but, you know, I think that's one of the things that we really got done last year was the establishment of that Budget Advisory Committee.
Ms. Nathan. One of the other topics related to number four was that we've had a brief conversation at the Board table about operationalizing some of our protocols into our 200 series of procedures. But just like, as people don't all, of school Board meetings, people don't all read our policies and procedures, so this Board Handbook would be a great way to summarize and refer to some of those operational, and could be part of an annual review process. And in addition, as Director Anderson has brought up before, we don't really, and as has, I should say, Director Garcia and McLaughlin, the orientation process for new Board members, that you all found that there were some pieces missing from that. And I think we've looked at some examples of what other districts have done with regard to the Board Handbook and how helpful that's been in orienting new Board members over time. So I think number four could be a good foundation for that work as well.
And I'm wondering if we could combine number four and number one. Number one is providing information to the public that supports Board discussions. This is all about communication, better communication, but as part of that communication, we could have a handbook with, that includes the procedures and protocols, including what the roles of Boards are and what they are not.
That could actually be a work product. Like, in my brain, I agree, but I'm thinking like one, three, and four technically could be under... could be under one goal with more than one objective, so each of them would be its own objective, and then we would have tasks or steps, interventions, whatever you want to call them, to get to that, so it really would be like, one, three, four, and then two.
Or would you feel okay about combining one and four, you know, communication and being clear about board's roles and responsibilities, and then having three as a separate thing, and that, that's maybe specific to budget, because that's been a big issue lately, and it should be, but what is the budget? Where does it come from? And part of that would be creating and enlisting this advisory committee.
So then...
I'm just thinking that if we make, if we make any one goal too big, it's going to get kind of unwieldy.
I don't, and I don't disagree with that, I think, but number three, to me, reads as though it's more about how we're re-engaging the community and also like educating them, which to me feels very much like one and four. So if what we're doing is more actionable and like, we're, we're doing the advisory committee versus like, we're just providing like, this is our handout, budget 101, that feels different to me.
Okay, good point. Yep, Melissa?
Another argument for maybe not combining them overly much is that I was going to mention in number one, improving communication with the public, seems like it should be more of a, a two-way communication, and this is more like a one-way providing, and I would like to encourage the board to consider resurrecting some form of listening post types of, they fell by the wayside for the most part during COVID because it was difficult to do it online, but it was also difficult to do it in person. So that would be my, my input is to keep that separate and insert wording about two-way communication rather than just providing information.
So I think you're suggesting for number one, and again, depending on how we combine things, you're also sort of stepping into what a SMART goal could be, and that could be that we would know that we're doing better if, among other things, we provide the information, maybe the kind of information that the board talks about, what are the board's responsibilities, the policies and procedures, and we would reinstate listening posts that we've had in the past. I mean, those could be two of the measures.
Listening posts are an equivalent, I mean, we can evolve with the times and figure out.
I missed that last part.
I said, listening posts are an equivalent. I mean, it doesn't have to be listening posts, it just needs to be something that establishes a way for parents and community members to feel like there's more of a dialogue rather than they're just receiving the information.
Dialogue's a point.
But, but how it's structured is immaterial to me, but I agree that if we, if we group things all too much, that it might get, some points might get lost, so. I, I don't, I don't think that we need to worry so much about having three goals if we're just, or fewer, if we're cramming everything under it, that's the same amount of content. I mean, how we divide it isn't important.
And you make a really good point. Thing is, and I don't know how gimmicky this is, but SMART goals, it's specific, and we don't have, certainly don't have to do that, that way, but that's just kind of an established way of making sure that each goal is clear, it's easy to understand, it's specific, and that we know exactly what we're doing, when we're doing it, and how we're going to know if we're getting, if we're getting towards that, achieving that. So, okay, but I, I hear and really respect that idea that the communication has to be reciprocal, more of a convers, a dialogue than just telling people stuff and then listening and taking notes. Mr. Browlow?
And I agree with Director Emerson. So perhaps there are parts of this that we could maybe not necessarily refer to our new communications director, but include her in the how-to, you know, versus sitting here tonight trying to figure out, and I think that would be with the, I don't know, chain of, well, she's not an employee, but, you know, I think the superintendent perhaps would support our, you know, asking for guidance, direction, professional support along these lines. And, and the number, I agree, it's not a number issue, oh, well, that's too many, or, or necessarily an overlap, and it's a place to start, and I think these have been listed out well, and so, why not, what are you asking, you, you were seeking input, okay? We're not voting, but seeking input, and I'll just say I'm excited, again, because, you know, I've been on the board, this is my second term, each year we, we speak of, well, board goals, board goals, board goals, and, and several iterations of board goals appear, and, and, but this gives us something smart, and so I'm, I'm, I'm supportive, supportive of this.
Okay, and just to go back to that one thing, you know, you talked about asking Mom Sue for, for some guidance. She's already been helping because for the last couple of meetings, after each meeting, she tapes a very brief video of, of one of us giving a summary, a two-minute, one or two-minute summary of some of the highlights of the board meeting that gets posted. I think there have been probably tens and tens of listeners, but it's something for people who don't want to watch the whole meeting, don't want to read it, they just want to hear somebody talking about it, and, you know, that's something we could build on if we decide that's going to be part of our way forward. Kathy?
And I would add to that, in addition to the, the way I see this communication piece of one and four is that the board handbook provides foundational reference information and the kinds of listening sessions, and we can, we can set a goal for ourselves as to, whether we think they need to be quarterly or that minimum that we should do, but I also think we should have some sort of measurable goal about that meeting-by-meeting communication. What are we going to do to make sure people are aware of when the meetings are, the content of the meetings? I, I think we've been trying to evolve our webpage a little bit over the past year. I'm not sure we've quite hit on the right content for what should be on the school board webpage to make it easy for the public to access our meeting-by-meeting information. We all know board docs is cumbersome in terms of, of accessing information, so the easier the gateway can be for our community to get to the information would be helpful. And then, and the after, right? Take a look at whether, is the video the right way to do it? Is the video plus the text the right way to do it? But some sort of measurable goal where we're, we're looking at our meeting-by-meeting communication.
And my question is going to be, is that what you're wanting from us right now is to turn these all into SMART goals? Because none of them are.
Oh, I'm taking notes, and I, I think we have a lot of potential for SMART goals. I'm thinking as we're talking about this, that, I'm not hearing anybody saying that, and we still haven't talked about the monitoring, the strategic plan, which I think is kind of not optional, but that we're thinking these are, these are important goals, these are things we want to do, so I, I'm thinking that we can get this information, we can come up with, because we're not voting on anything, we can come up with a possible SMART goal for each one. We can have a small committee, it could be Ms. Nathan and I, or we could have volunteers to create a SMART goal for each of the ones we decide on, that could then be presented to the board to vote on, possibly beginning of September. Does that seem...
It's on the agenda for the 23rd of August, so.
Possibly by August 23rd would be better. I mean, I don't think it's going to be that complicated, because, because the other thing is if, you know, we, we get these, and they could still be modified a little bit, you know, just here's a draft, if this isn't working, if the SMART goal doesn't seem attainable, we can switch it a little bit. Can we, can we move on to talk for a minute, though, about monitoring the progress towards the goals and outcomes of the strategic plan? Thing is, it's already going to be on the agenda for our meetings, so is that something that we...
Well, we said that is a goal, we've achieved it immediately, and we can pat ourselves on the back.
Well, and continually monitoring means we're continuously meeting.
I was actually a little bit concerned about that word. Maybe regularly instead, I feel like continuously, like, you know, we can't sleep at night.
Constantly.
Well, and part two, Dr. Pecow, was, you know, you talked about when the board would be voting on various aspects of the strategic plan, so, I mean, that would be something that would be important for us to know. Here's the part of it that's coming up, this is what we need to know about, but, I mean, this is our roadmap going forward, so I think that one is critically important.
And maybe we just don't have that adjective of continually.
Monitor, just take it out, monitor progress.
I mean, continually is better than constantly.
Right. Slightly.
And I don't, I don't know how to write it.
Well, I think continually, to me, implies that it's always ongoing, you know, we're, it's not like one day we say, well, we've arrived, because our work continues. It always continues, it always continues, never ending.
And I don't know how to write it as a SMART goal or as a, as a product, but there's a piece in the strategic plan that talks about if you don't make certain things the focus, everything is the focus, and I, I think for us, as we're presented with recommendations and decisions that we need to make, but we also, we also know that it's possible for board members sometimes to try to interject, oh, we should be looking at this, or we should be focusing on this. This is almost a discipline, if you will, in this goal, to remember, we have a three-year strategic plan, we've made a commitment that we're going to be focusing on those as our priorities, bringing other things into the field of play might deviate from what we've all already agreed to do. So it's a mindset, more of a, you know, we will not, I don't know how we write that.
Well, and ensuring that, that it will be on board agendas on a regular basis. A part of this, too, is aligning the superintendent's goals with the strategic plan, so, which we will be talking about at the next meeting.
And Kathy, maybe the way to think about that is to train ourselves to make reference to a specific strategic planning goal when we're talking about making a decision.
Yes, I like that.
So I, in this discussion, I just want to point out to board members that in the board doc software that we have, under library, there is a section for strategic goals. It's been there for 20 years and we've never used it, but it has the capacity, if you put the goals in there, it can search keywords and it can, it can document measurement for you from the board agendas. So my, I just wanted to offer that whoever is on this committee, it might be a good idea to include our board doc software support channel, and then I would be happy to help with that, to get the goals formatted in a way that is electronically, automatically measurable within, with the agenda items. It would be quick access for board members and the community, and I think it would be a more efficient way to be able to keep on track with what goals you're looking at and how you're doing.
Julie?
Actually, there is something there from, it's very recent, too, from June 21st, the school climate and safety plan for next year, so I think we've, we've already made a good start with getting something in that category, but it, it certainly would be helpful to me to know that all of those documents live in a specific place rather than, you know, cluttered, who knows where.
Go ahead.
This is a really great point, I wanted to wait because it's not pertinent to changing your goals, but one effort that I think could be helpful for at least three of your current goals and maybe four is that through the strategic change initiative that is focused on community partnerships, we actually are going to undertake defining what we mean by the community. Every school district I've worked in over 30, with or in over 30 years uses the term "the community," and I've yet to work with one that defines that with enough precision to be able to say, we really did engage the community. What does that actually mean? So that's going to be happening through the strategic change initiative that's focused on community partnerships. The results of that might be useful to the board when you talk about engaging and informing the community about the budget, or, you know, providing information to the public that supports board discussions and decision and communicates with the community. So it may be something that's going to be happening at the sort of staff level that could be useful to the board in a number of these goals. It won't be a rigid mathematical definition, but defining what are the components of community such that we really can say with some level of inclusion and precision, we talked to our community. And so we'll see where that goes. That effort will kick off in September, and so we'll obviously, you'll be hearing about that through the process that we talked about a minute ago, but I could see how that work might be useful to you in implementing your board goals, which had a lot to do with community engagement.
So what do you think about asking the community engagement committee to set up a SMART goal, or SMART goals, that would combine numbers one and four? Then, do we want to include number three in that as well, or have that, the one about focusing on the budget? Do we want to have that as a separate thing, which would certainly overlap?
Is three the one that we're also now trying to make reciprocal? So we're providing information but also looking for feedback from...
Look, three is the one where I think we would not only provide information, but also have this community advisory committee, and that's who we would...
On the budget.
On budget, yeah.
Right.
And that's who we would get the budget from, and then Ken's point, who's the community, you know, who would be involved in that? But I think that rather than having everybody just say, you're spending too much money or you need to spend more money on that, if we had a, a really inclusive advisory committee, that could be really useful. I mean, we get, we get feedback all the time anyway, but a group of people who would be informed on the budget, who would understand how it works, and then when we come, we need to make big decisions, they would be part of the conversation before the decision's made. Would you feel comfortable having that as a separate one?
So I would feel, if that's the way we're describing them, it would make sense to have maybe all four as separate ones because their mechanism for engagement is different.
Yeah.
So four separate goals, and also if number two says continually, that's not, we can't turn that into a SMART goal because then there is no T, because we're just doing it all the time. So we would have to either take it out, or we'd have to be very specific about, like, quarterly we are monitoring, or biannually.
We could certainly change that into a SMART goal, so it'd be every quarter, every month, every whatever, we make it that way, for sure.
Jane, I'm wondering if anyone would look at possibly considering four as an objective of one?
Yeah, that's, I was kind of going in that direction.
Yeah, that, it's, it's something, you know, it's like, it's something we can do and check it off our list.
Right.
We want to keep, I think it, I think it fits under one because it supports the board discussions and the community, but it's not, I don't see it as strategic as the other three.
And, and there's, I think we can define it as a, as a document, as a product, and then set a date for when it needs to be done, but. So, yeah, and for all of these, you know, we could have more than one measure, you know, for instance, we would have a document finished by whatever, or we would have it out to the public, or, and then down the road, we could have, you know, be more specific about, going to have the document ready, and then how are we going to communicate that with the public? And it could certainly be part, then, of the public communication thing. I mean, I think in everything we do, that transparency and that willingness to ensure that people know, understand, and are involved in school district work, school district decisions, that's going to continue to be really important, and I think all of these sort of reflect that.
Jane, I have one more thing to add to that as I read through it more times. I think getting the information out about the board and roles and responsibilities is one task. The other task is to somehow measure whether the community then feels they're well-informed about it, and, you know, getting that feedback.
So that could be one of the...
I see, those are two different things, right.
Does the community feel?
Right.
Feedback from the community.
You know, kind of measuring what they know now versus what they will know after they learn this.
So again, Julie, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to add about the budget committee and who is going to be on it. When Melissa and I worked on this, we were pretty specific about the membership, the level of authority. There are, I think, there are eight or nine points of, you know, what that would look like, how do we measure what we're doing, and so on. So, I mean, I would look to that charge statement as being a real driver of what this looks like. And I think we had also had maybe some conversation, or maybe I just dreamed it, that John Carlson would be the one who would basically be in charge of and directing this committee, since he's the numbers guy.
If he wished. I think we put in him or his design, didn't we? Again, something to that extent, that if he were too busy running his department, that...
Then he could assign it to somebody.
Yeah.
But, I mean, as opposed to it being directed and led by a board member.
Yeah, that raises a really good question. You know, number three is about engaging, informing the community, educating them on the budget. That's one issue, and we could, as part of this SMART goal, we could say, this is how we're going to do that. Second, another thing that I see is creating this advisory committee, but I'm not sure if part of the SMART goal needs to be as specific as, and these are the types of people we want to...
No, I don't think, I don't think it does either, either, but you were...
We've already passed that charge statement, so that's already been established.
Right.
Okay.
So, for me, number three is, from a board perspective, is to make sure that that process happens in this coming year. And to ensure that it's not happening independent of board decision-making. So, for example, it doesn't help to do a Budget 101 on June 15th if we voted on the budget on June 7th. So, knowing the cycle that John puts together that starts in January for budget work, and knowing the kind of input we're hoping to get from this community committee, I think it's our responsibility as a board to make sure we're integrating that education piece out and then that feedback piece back into that cycle that starts in January and ends in June. And that's where I think our goal is, as a board. Our responsibility is to make sure that's happening, so that whatever happens there can feed into our decision-making.
It's like, it's like we were talking about before, the tracking backwards to make sure that we've got enough time. And I know from having been on a past Ancient History Budget Committee that started in October, it was really rushed, so... It's like yesterday, you know, the planning for that needs to happen.
Right.
So, it's a really good plan. Before we blink, it'll be July.
I'm wondering then, if I volunteer the Community Engagement Committee to come up with SMART goals for these, and looking at the timeline, we are set to approve these at the next meeting. I'm wondering if it would be possible, and I know it is possible, for us to provide these to board members within the next few days. Here's a potential SMART goal for each of our goals, and then discuss those August 23rd, edit as needed, and then approve them either at that meeting or at the next meeting. We may not be ready to approve them yet on August 23rd, but I think we could at least look at proposed SMART goals for each.
I mean, that's seven days.
Say it again.
That's seven days away.
That is one week, exactly.
That's to develop the draft. I would rather, I like that because I would rather give everybody a chance to talk through the draft at one meeting and then not be pressured to vote.
Does that seem reasonable? And Community Engagement Committee, are you all about this?
Oh, we're all about this.
Why, they're enthusiastic.
Nobody's going out of town in the next seven days.
I do have a question, however, Jean, and certainly, it doesn't have to be addressed now, but I do recall past efforts of where finances let the effort, internal, external, of informing, engaging the community and stakeholders of, be it referendum-related information, or primarily referendum, not necessarily specific budget, but, and maybe it's implied that we're simply, I think, more simply presenting the information that John would provide to us, you know, versus coming up with something we're going to give to, you know... So, I guess I don't want us to fill or communicate that this is going to be major undertaking on our part when it's really more so just a sharing of information passed on to us through the executive director of finance and...
And that's why we don't do the budget.
Yeah.
I mean, and all the finance stuff, I mean, we have experts doing that.
Yeah, exactly, and I think that's just a point, that this is about communicating to people. I mean, most of these are about ensuring that we have that communication, right? Because we don't, you know, we don't get to set the price of how much milk's going to cost this year, or what electricity's going to cost, so... Just communicating that. So, do we feel okay about that?
And are we tasking John, are we, we're making decisions, that's what we're going to try to do, without involving him in the process?
Well, I think we're going to come up with a draft, and he will be at the meeting.
He'll just be doing his job.
I'm guessing he will let us know if we have said something that's impossible.
And we're probably actually charging the superintendent.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm going to have a pretty clear role, having actually worked extensively with these committees, which John has not done, and so, we're going to be very engaged. We have taken the starting point, the great work that you did last year in developing the policy, so John is, right now, is all, as many of our leaders are, really overwhelmed with a number of other things. And so, I want to be really strategic in working with him and launching this, absolutely. One of the things, just briefly, that the conversations last spring led me to think about that committee is we may want to have John as the content lead and someone else as the facility, because that frees John up to do what John does very well, which is to be our finance, and not necessarily worry about, I think that worked pretty well for us with the strategic plan, and so, that's something he and I have been talking about. We know this needs to get underway very early in the fall. It's a high priority, for sure. And I'm not going to be on the committee, but I'm very much going to work with John to get it started in the right way and the board, for sure.
Thanks for clarifying that, too, because obviously, we're not going to be running the advisory committee. We're just going to be supporting the effort to create one.
Does it have one board member or two?
Oh, I don't remember.
Two, yeah, there will be two board members, who will be asked to serve on it, though.
Yeah, but I mean, our board isn't going to be telling people what to do. We'll be representatives, just like any other representative, and John or Cantor will be leading that charge.
Well, I'll be working, John will be our content lead, I'll be helping John set up the process. And this conversation is super helpful to refresh my thinking about how we're going to do that and ways to connect the board to it.
And I'm remembering back to the one that I served on in Ancient History, and it had co-facilitators. One was a cabinet member and one was a community member.
That's something that could be...
Which, you know, it helped with the trust factor. At times, there is more or less of one in the district, and also more hands to help out, you know.
Yep.
Okay, I think we have a plan. We have, the results of the superintendent's evaluation will be provided at the August 23rd board meeting. So, at this time, the board will move to closed session in order to conduct a year-end evaluation of the superintendent. This closed session is allowed and approved by Minnesota Statute 13D.05. Again, at the conclusion of the session, we will reconvene in here and simply to adjourn. A summary of the evaluation results will be available August 23rd, and...
Do you need a motion for that?
I do. I need a motion to...
Close session.
Move to closed session.
So, move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in closed session at 6:06 PM on August 16th.
Not really.
The school board meeting is reconvened at 7:24 PM on August 16th. Clerk Barlow, will you please read the name of those who were present at the closed session? Thank you. It is 7:25 and we are adjourned.